Stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone get a chance to read last month's minutes?
Yes.
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 Can I get a motion to approve December minutes?
I guess the only question I have is what did American Hydro actually charge us since the work's already been done?
I haven't paid it yet, so I don't know what the invoice, it's like on my desk what it says. I don't remember.
They were here what, two days, one day?
One day almost.
A half a day technically, I think it was when Kyle texted me and said they were done.
So it should be just the thirty-six hundred, correct?
Plus five percent.
Is that what it is then?
Plus the five percent field charge?
Even though it didn't?
I would think so.
State the exact area.
I would think they would do it for the whole day. So they're gonna get a motion to approve December's minutes?
Motion approved. Last month's minutes?
Second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, new business, uh, need to, for the year, uh, elect a president, vice president for the town board.
Somebody needs to make a nomination.
I make a motion nominate Shane for president?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Vice president? Would either one of you entertain it? That's a no.
Yeah, I, I would do it if you want.
You? Would you want it?
Absolutely not.
I mean, with Steve's uncertainty at this time, I mean, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, Steve's good for that bit. He's on the board, he'll still be eligible.
So...
Doesn't matter as long as Steve was coming back.
As far as I know, I think he is.
I mean...
Help. That's my only concern is, you know, to be there to assist.
Right. So it's up to you. I don't care. However, you guys wanted to... Cecil, do you wanna take the run at it or?
Well, I don't mind.
I make a motion Cecil for vice president.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
I move on myself.
Yeah, she can vote for herself. Everybody in the past has voted for themselves.
Advertise for new attorney.
Steve told me to put that on there. I contacted the papers and, but they're holidays. I only got one email back and I haven't responded to it, but the lowest one was like three hundred dollars, but that's to like put it everywhere and I don't know that we need to put it everywhere. I'm thinking just a regular classified ad in the pladium item, so I'm not real sure on what the prices will be. If they'll do it, if they will do just a plain classified ad in the pladium item.
I would rather go with Wayne, Wayne.
Western Wayne?
Western Wayne, I mean, more people would get the Western Wayne than they would get the pladium now.
Exactly.
I can, I have a couple of business cards for them. I can contact Western Wayne and see what type of ad they can do and what their prices are. So...
I'd say it needs to be done, I mean, regardless, so.
Yeah.
Um...
Would you like to talk about the reason why she quit?
Be right back.
That's, turn it up to you if you want. I'm asking you.
And we've all got the email and it was labeled confidential email, so. I mean, that's...
I did go to Steve Cagnati's open house.
Oh, did you?
And, um, he mentioned, I don't know what her last name is, but her first name is Amy and she does service.
Okay.
And I don't know what firm she's with.
What was this? Was the ordering, what you took off?
Yeah.
Okay. Got confused because Lori Brennan heard it out from before and I didn't see that. Um, three oh five South Vine, was that the?
Septic tank.
Septic?
That we voted on in the meeting, but then the employees and the town president wanted to change what we, what we were doing.
So what was voted on and discussed in that meeting is null and void, so it has to be discussed and voted on or whatever, all over again.
What, why happened for it to become an all over?
Doug and Mike come out. Doug and Mike came and looked at it also. The gentlemen that are, we are paying is our operators. And they said that it didn't, they could wait till spring if, if they determined that it needed to be done. Doug looked at it and said it's flowing just fine. They did remove some, the ball of roots, so I mean, it's...
So I was present and had a chat with Mike as far as on the operator and they looked at it. They did remove the roots that had built up again. And he stated that as far as us digging it, has nothing to do with him. It is a town board decision on repairing it and I informed him that the town board had already had a meeting. The attorney said that we were allowed to talk about it because we deemed it to be a septic backup to be considered an emergency. And I informed him that we had already voted to have it dug up and have it repaired. But then I told him that other people changed their minds on Tuesday morning and that's how the attorney was notified that, um, it wasn't gonna be done per our decision at that meeting. Cause he said it was our decision as far as not his on repairing it. And I informed him, he said, well, it sounds like the council is already taking care of it. Well, we had, but now we have to redo it.
So did we find out where the roots that are supposedly plug, plugging it are?
They're coming in through the inlet.
On our side or their side?
The tank itself. I think my question would be, how can an employees or a board member override once a board has voted on it and approved for it to be done?
I wanted the operators that were in charge of the, the systems to take a look at it. This is what I wanted. Cause I didn't know anything about the quote unquote emergency until that Monday night, so.
You were there.
I mean, you knew about it before, so.
You knew about it seven weeks prior to that because you were supposed to look into it to see exactly what was gonna be done. We got tech messages that say so, so. And they quit covering it up. So, so now we're gonna have to start all over again as far as getting it fixed.
My first question is, is the resident having any issues at this point in time?
I haven't talked to the resident, so. David, do you know?
Walker said that they had told him there was gurgling once, so that's the only issue I've heard of since. I've been back there once a week to check on it. Septic still looks good, so.
So are we holding off on it because we think it's resolved? Or are we holding off on it because we're wanting to take care of it at a later date?
My understanding, um, the employees wanna hold off and not do it till spring.
I've been told for years that if you hear gurgling, that it's something on your end and that, on the, on the house side, then to call a plumber. But that's, you know, that's just fine. What I've been told.
Could be.
I mean, if the, I feel if the ball of, uh, roots are, was removed, I'd say we wait till spring and look at it, have them look at it again and go from there, but.
That was also when the backhoe went down, so that was the major reasoning. It was at least getting pushed off to that ball when it went down.
Hmm, this started on Tuesday and the backhoe didn't come to light until Thursday. We voted on it Monday night. Come Tuesday, it was redirected that it wasn't gonna be done that time, so.
I personally am at an impasse about the whole subject. Um, do we? Part of me says if we don't need to take care of it now, don't take care of it. But on the other hand, you know, there's that other part of me that says it needs to be taken care of, why not take care of it now if it's, unless it's just the frozen ground or, or what?
The way Steve explained it that night, the roots came in through the septic and into their intake. So that's why it was gurgling, but the source of the problem was the septic tank, so that's what made it on us and not the homeowner.
Yeah, and the same problem this summer, that's why they spent two thousand dollars on.
Yeah.
Cause it came in from inside the septic tank and went into the pipe, you know, that's coming out of the house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's how Steve explained it that night.
Okay.
So that's why it was determined that it on us and not the homeowner, because it wasn't just the pipe. Right?
Correct. And then starting on Tuesday is when the employees and Shane said that they didn't think it was important anymore to get it taken care of.
Because the ball of roots that was in the tank was removed and it was flowing. I mean, I wasn't here, so.
But the board voted to have it replaced. Is that what I'm hearing correct?
Not replaced.
To have it fixed, yes.
Have it fixed.
Correct.
And then they changed their mind without having any, had a little meeting behind your back to get such a thing going. Cause that's what was, oh, spade to spade. If you guys voted on it, how can you change it without having another meeting? How is that possibly legal? We could ask the attorney, but evidently she quit and ain't nobody talking about that yet. Why'd the attorney quit? Do I need to stand up and podium for that? Cause ain't nobody answering nothing up here.
First of all, it's not your time to talk. Then there's a time. I'm not, don't mean to be rude, but.
Yeah.
That's the most anybody said in that board right there, that every question he's asked is absolutely nothing, so.
But we are discussing. Let us discuss it.
You had said something Lori, I didn't hear you.
I said if we voted to have it repaired, I just assumed just do it and get it over with.
I agree with you. Because it's gonna continue to get, cause it took seven weeks and we had another root ball.
I mean, you know, a, a month from now, it may be worse and it might be minus thirty degrees.
So are you making a motion to go proceed with digging of that and getting it taken care of?
I am.
Second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Scott door closed.
Yeah, Mark?
Yeah. I don't know where it went though.
You wanna use mine?
Oh, there it is. I got it.
Thank you.
Um, David got a quote to service the doors at the garage and the four ba, four doors at maintenance building by the water tower. So is that the, your guys' garage, the main garage?
Yeah.
And that's two hundred and eighty dollars and that would be, come out off free, correct? And they haven't been done for?
This will be going on forty years.
On the forty years.
Did you say forty years?
Four.
Four, okay.
Twenty twenty.
And they're supposed to be done while every?
The tagger person said every three years they were getting done, so, which I mean, we're still close with it.
So Scott doors have been coming out and servicing those doors on a regular basis, is that correct?
I went through and checked and there is a payment to them about every three years. Mark took care of that kinda stuff, so I just would pay the invoice. I didn't know that they actually came and serviced it and him not calling because there was something wrong with it, so.
Right. So can I get a motion for, to have Scott door come and service the, the doors at the, uh, at the garage?
At the maintenance building?
At the maintenance, for two hundred and eighty labor only. So I mean, it, it could be more if they need parts to fix something.
They shouldn't need parts.
They shouldn't.
I make a motion, we're gonna tell Scott door, have them do the maintenance on the doors.
Maintenance building?
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, also on Scott door, I believe we're having some issues with the front door lock, correct?
I don't have any problems with it.
I've gotten one phone call a couple of weeks ago that David and Walker couldn't get it to lock and couldn't get it to set, get the alarm to set, so. Um, they've gotten a quote on a Schlage residential keyless lock.
You can still use the key.
And use a key also. Uh, it's all mechanical. That one's two eighty-two fifty. And then is this other one, David? The other, the non one?
I think the other one had some kind of fancy deadbolt with it. I think it had, I think it was an automatic, you type in a code and the deadbolt locks. He said he'd just put that on there, just to show you guys different options.
And the mechanical lock, I mean, is two eighty-two fifty and then the other one is eight forty-nine thirty. And on the, on the top one, on the two eighty-two, it's a combination. We can make it up to six, six digit code. There's no batteries involved. It's all mechanical, so.
I don't see any reason in spending that money at all.
As far as the key itself on the door, I've never had issues with it as far as the keypad itself.
The handle is a little loose.
Yeah, but that could possibly be tightened up.
I was going to take the screwdriver and ride the plate off and tighten them screws in there myself. But as far as the alarm setting, that would be the keypad in the hallway. The door lock doesn't have anything to do with the alarm.
Think Terrell said there was a door that wasn't closed all the way. I think it was the front.
The front door, when it gets cold or a lot of moisture, it swells and you got to push on it to make it latch, but that isn't a doorknob problem, that's a door problem. It's always done that. The back door does it sometimes too, depending on how cold and, and how damp it gets. But the general's gonna be tightened when we do department reports, I'll explain why, but that would be buildings and grounds, which is general, and I just, in all honesty, don't see that any reason in spending three hundred dollars on that doorknob.
Angry retreat, I think that's something we could put off.
Okay. Um, the backhoe and the skid steer attachment quotes. The sweeper attachment, the way Kyle explained to me, there's some bolts that hold the actual broom in the side. Somehow or another, they have been stripped out. And they've had the, this attachment for probably a month now. Do you know when they took it down there?
Hmm, right, about that long.
So, and it's, uh, for four hundred and ninety dollars to fix the, the street sweeper. And then the quote to fix the, the backhoe, when they come and done the service on it, they found the injection pump, which is the fuel pump, uh, was leaking. Um, they're going to, it'll have to go to Dave's Diesel up in Muncie. And then that was fifteen hundred dollars. Um, six hours labor to remove it. Uh, that was twelve hundred and forty. There's a hydraulic valve leaking. Just nine hundred. Damage hoses is nine sixty. The gear oil service was two fifty and then a parking brake adjust would be one forty. Uh, altogether, it was five thousand four hundred and ten dollars to get the backhoe back in working order.
And now it gets split into three too, cause it's used on all departments.
As far as the street sweeper, who has just wore out?
I, the way, the way Kyle talked, that the, there's, that bolts in and holds the actual broom inside, they were, I don't know why, were out. He said, but they were all stripped out and he said they've never touched the inside of that. From what I was told.
Is that the one with the big hose on it? Is that the vacuum?
It's the skid steer.
No, this is for the skid steer.
It's what they put on the front of it, what they use to sweep the streets.
Okay.
They had it out right before they got coffee days. I don't know if you've seen it.
I, I haven't, I've never seen it.
I'll make a motion to get the backhoe and the street sweep repaired.
You got a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution?
That's me. I gave you, got everyone a copy instead of having to say all those numbers and accounts. I just made a copy for everybody to have. But this is the transfers that I need to do to make. Oh.
I guess I didn't pass it now.
These are the end of the year transfers that I need to make to accounts to make them positive and so the first column is the amount, the next is the account that it's coming from, and the next is the account that it's going to. So we all knew this budget was gonna be tight, so I was short in some lines and had more than I needed in some other lines, so I just have to move them, move it around. And so the resolution says, be it resolved by unanimous agreement of the Town Council of Fountain City, Indiana as follows. That the need exists to transfer funds within the budget, said transfer will benefit the welfare of the citizens of the town of Fountain City. Said transfers are from appropriated funds and that no additional appropriation is required. Therefore, all needed transfer information that is on attached page effective December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And it's because it's going to different departments and some different funds is why there has to be a resolution done instead of me just being able to do it myself. There were some other transfers I did, but they were from the same department, the same department, so I don't have to do a resolution for those. That is, I think I messed up when I cut the check for the last truck payment and clicked on the wrong appropriation, so I had to move some money around. That's what that's for, is that last truck payment.
That one, that was there?
Yeah.
Okay, cause it was just like two fire equipment replacements. I'm like, where, which one was it?
Yeah, that's the account that I use for that truck payment and I think I clicked on the wrong line when I was getting the rest, the remainder needed from the other equipment fund.
The twenty seven?
It was all there, I just...
The twenty-seven, ten, seventy-four?
Yeah.
Can I get a motion to accept the resolution?
I'll make a motion to accept a resolution.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's no unfinished business. Uh, department reports. We'll start with the street department here. Met with American Hydro to get drains jetted and backed, all drains at the intersection of Mill, Walnut and the two drains on Green Street are cleaned out and properly flowing, so.
And I talked with Kyle as soon as they were done. Um, one of the work orders that the town employees are creating now, they're supposed to take pictures as far as to document what everything is down in it that did not get done. Um, he did state that everything that he pulled out of it, or they pulled out of it, was from the construction. Which was all the gravel and the mud that ran off of when they were working on those corners.
That was on the water side, or?
Right. Correct. That was when, uh, Cobalt was putting in the water lines.
Are they attaching, are they assigning these work orders to all of us, so we can all see?
Uh, that part I do not know on that side of it. Do you know?
Is it like when we create them, are we tagging you guys in?
Yeah, anybody in it?
Normally it's just like, if all three of us are there, then whoever makes it, we put all three of our, whoever the employee is there.
But we can go in and look at them though, can we not?
Correct.
You can, yes. But like I said, I, it's, it's hard on the documentation because on all of these meters that we have had to change out that weren't changed out on that side of it, um, we have documentation on that side of it. And, um, you know, this here is just yet another one that the town is absorbing of what they didn't take care of at the end of their project. And we're getting up there quite a bit. Between all the meters and the cleanup of the drains and still have to repair that drain.
Right, the...
In order to, um, repair or, you know, from the jetting of it, from the construction.
Uh, the drain on Green Street needs to be repaired. The hole, inlet casing, whatever you wanna call that, um, from what I understood, it is collapsed, correct?
It's gone.
No, it, it broke. No, it, it broke.
Um, Kyle's got one quote here from Cobalt for the catch basin. And that's. Forty-five hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents. Or I talked to David and Kyle today, they called me about it. And they say, and he said Doug was in on it too.
We met Doug over there.
That Doug said suggest put a ten-inch pipe down, is that right?
We have it in now, just to kind of prevent more from falling in.
And then fill in around it with concrete.
Yeah, he said we should be able to do it ourselves pretty easily and a lot cheaper.
So I think, I mean.
We have to take care of it ourselves, we can't pay Cobalt.
Right, that's.
Fix something that they broke.
Yeah, exactly.
At some point in time, our guys have to start doing all this work. That's the reason why we hired more guys.
Which Doug said he could be present the first time to do it, so.
Cobalt's gonna fix it.
Nope, no, we are. David and. The guys are. And then Doug's gonna be here with you guys, you're correct. Uh, cleaned up a large mulch pile in the field by the water tower that was left behind by Tree Company that Duke Energy hired. Um, also used remaining dirt pile from field to fill in low spots from where stormwater project was done. Uh, Tree Amigos completed the job on four oh four Ross Street. Discussed getting a routine maintenance schedule for getting all drains cleaned out. Through the, throughout town. Uh, the price is thirty-six hundred dollars a month with five percent surcharges, and that is on a twelve-month contract.
Drains, the storm drains?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they, when they, when they came out and did the hydro project, they said it. They said it'd be a good idea, it's cheaper to get in like a. Like every three months they come out and it was like, yeah, that sounds cool, like price and sent to us, and then they. Said it was thirty-six hundred dollars a month, and I was.
Must have come out and jet them?
I, I guess, the way he talked, that's what it sounded like.
I mean, if we're gonna pay a company to climb and clean the storm drains, then we don't need a street super antenna.
I don't think they touch the street, really.
Well.
The storm drain's part of the street.
Yeah. On that side of it.
So, yeah, I, that's a, now.
I'm not able to keep Kyle over that.
Yeah, and then the last thing, the street sweeper needs fixed. I mean, that's, that kind of explains what, what's wrong with the, the street sweeper, so.
Only thing as far as on the street department to finish it up, there's still a lot of leaves along the edges. Davis Street, there's still leaves all along between Davis or Hartley and Twenty-seven. Sitting in the drains also on that side of it, so at some point in time, the street guy needs to go through and get the streets cleaned up.
Didn't we already just approve to have it there?
Yeah.
Uh, on Kerry's report on the police department. Um, monthly and yearly reports are attached. He's got three cases drawn. Two active, thirty-nine for the year of twenty twenty-three. Uh, all officers have met the requirements for the year of twenty-three. And been reported to ILEA for compliance, starting on scheduled trainings for twenty-four. Um, Kerry took some vacation time in November and December. Uh, De- Deputy Marshal Terrell had eventually, eventfully. Had eventfully weekend.
Eventful.
Eventful. Weekend, but handled situation and filed felony charges.
This past weekend?
I believe so.
Yes, it was.
So. Yeah, I'm running.
The only other thing on the police department, there's been a few people asking as far as our police department, as far as them working. I asked them for their hours. They do keep track of their hours. He printed it all. And I went through and, um, we have one full-time, just to let everybody know, we have one full-time employee. On the police department and one part-time employee. Both of them are meeting their hours as far as on that side of it. If somebody has a way to come up with more money to hire more people, please let anybody on the board know. To where we can possibly try and get more coverage.
Cause we touched on that a lot.
Three, three, three or four times a month, a year, so.
September, October and. Uh, the sewer department, uh, they discharged Monday, December eleventh through the fifteenth. Total gallons discharged was one point three million gallons for November. Um, met with wrecks from Alliance to set up training date for lagoons. Uh, cleaned up trash and scrap behind the salt shed. The flags were lowered at the beginning of the month for Jimmy Carter's wife, is that right? I believe so.
Think that's what it was.
Yeah. Um, then they were raised back up. Uh, cleaned out east side of shop, made a new bin to store scrap metal. Uh, Kyle and David called Andrew from New Holland to set up backhoe service. Uh, removed valve covers from Water Street, Davis Street. Uh, the three oh five Vine Street, subject is being evaluated. Uh, Doug and Mike discussed different ideas to approach it, determined the dig on the subject could wait till spring, also met with them at Lagoons and Water Plant. So we can go over procedures and all paperwork referring to the job. Lagoon transfer from cell two and three over to cell one. Starting to put a spreadsheet together of subject tanks going through town and inspecting random tanks, looking for roots and other possible issues. Uh, Luke Peters came out to pump out one oh seven north. Uh, cleaned up trash around shop, organized bins, made. To store old pipe. And metal, breaked out all trash, et cetera. Uh, quote for service shop doors. Uh. Was able to utilize a lot of downtime to get the shop cleaned up and organized. I had properly disposed of old tools, equipment and oils. With the help of Kyle, the garage is more organized than it's ever been. Also, we have time to go through and remove trash, weeds and old concrete, broken parts from the front of the shop. Moved gravel over to create more equipment storage space. Uh, taking advantage of all the old books and notes that I've been able to find to use them, to study guides to help prepare for my upcoming test. Uh, things he needs on the sewer side is. A third truck besides the dump truck, because it is, did you guys not find a hole in the frame on that?
There's quite a decent sized hole.
Um, a concrete slab at the shop to keep gravel mulch and sand for projects. And. Possible paternity leave. Paid paternity leave. Are you expecting again?
And what is that?
Uh, end of May. Um, there's nothing on the fire department side.
Uh, hold on a second, sorry.
Sorry.
As far as on the sewer, the only thing that was, it was brought up to me, um, I don't know. Walker was talking, um, as far as he was talking with Doug, as far as our guys start doing their own sledge dash. Out there instead of having to pay someone to do it.
I think, oh, she went in there, I think it was under, it's under contract, I believe.
But we subcontracted out.
Right, I believe.
Doug is willing to teach our guys how to do it. The only thing that we need to do, we need to purchase two oars, a little John boat, life jackets. As far as, because they will ore themselves out into the lagoons in order to push down into to see what the sludge reading is. Um, right off the bat, probably the first year probably is gonna save us money, but once we have it. As far as, like the boat is four hundred and fifty bucks, um, there's another one, yeah, there's four hundred and fifty bucks. The oars are. Uh, six foot, two of them, looks like. Fifty-six dollars for two or possibly one, it'd be fifty-six dollars, but then there'd be ne- need two of them. The life jackets are fifteen dollars a piece. And then, um, the sludge judge set, complete set. It's like, in other words, what they need to do the test is like another hundred and sixty-three dollars. So you're looking at a hundred and twelve, thirty-dollar.
We can even find a cheaper boat on marketplace.
Yeah, I mean, that's a possibility, as far as, I just wanted to bring it up this month. To where we could really double check with Doug to make sure. What all we do need to do, we can put it on next month as far as our guys start doing it. And, you know, like I said, as far as this year or this next year, we probably won't save much money. Be it from that point on, it will be our guys that are doing it. They're gonna be trained by our operators to do it, so in the long run, it's gonna save us money. Cause I think that test is like anywhere from a thousand. To fourteen hundred dollars a year that we pay.
I was gonna say, does it, do you know when, how often they do sludge dash down the?
It's yearly, isn't it?
Pretty sure it was.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's yearly, so I mean, af- after the first initial.
Just did and I paid and gave me the invoice and paid it, I didn't.
So I mean, that's something as far as to put on our agenda from possibly next month, to really look into it more. David and Walker could turn around and.
Some compare to where we have more than just one quote.
Right, yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, as far as, you know, whether or not we could find a, a used John boat, as far as that goes, that might save us a little bit of money. But ultimately, if we go this direction. In a long, long term, it's definitely gonna save the town a lot of money, and we're actually. Becoming more efficient as far as with more guys that we have and then doing the work themselves. That's the end goal, so.
So you just want.
Yeah, we'll.
Table that.
We'll table this till next month, have them pull up some more quotes.
You've really got to table it.
Well, we'll, we'll put it on next month as far as on that side of it. We'll have them get comparable quotes as far as for the John boats, the oars.
It will be on the actual agenda instead of a discussion.
Right, that's right, in the department reports, and then, um, we can revisit it for next month.
Sounds good. Is it my turn? Is the water sewer place department street done?
No, we still have to do water.
Oh, okay.
This was given, cause he just seen it, um, Walker seen this at the end of the day as far as that it needs to be done. That is for the, some filters or something like that.
That's like some kind of requirement.
It is a requirement. Um, he did call and talk to Doug, and Doug said, um.
Add it in here.
Yeah, add it in there, so that's what that is.
Uh, the skated system was installed, and all the bugs have been worked out. Uh, the monthly testing's been done, backed wash twenty-four thousand gallons this month. Put a new meter at the one hundred building. Met with Cobalt over valve issues. What valve issues was we having? Do you know?
I think it was on the high pressure, low pressure, or.
In the water plant?
In the water plant itself as far as when it wouldn't shut off that one or two times. Isn't that right?
I'm pretty sure.
Uh, done three final readings, um, meter leaking on Cherry was replaced, was repaired. Uh, maggot water plant calibrated, backflow preventer annual check set for January fourth. Meeting with Doug and Mike along with trip to plant for better understanding of wastewater and waters, waterworks. Uh, three meters replaced for not working properly, were those radio reads? Do you know?
Uh.
I do believe so.
Believe so.
Um, I think one of them was the meter itself.
Shouldn't they be sent back?
Uh, they are, yeah, he's already talked to Scott and Scott's gonna.
Well, Eric actually, he's the, or the, the warranty guy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On that side of it.
Broken radio antenna replaced, water truck lift springs for toolbox replaced and truck cleaned out. Uh, Luke's list for pumping, continued to GPS more pits and other assets found. To not be in the Silver Smith. Uh, things needed for projects, the quote for sludge testing. The quote for alarm to skater.
I thought that, that is for, so in other words.
If something was to go down, they should get a text, right?
Right, but in, there isn't a line or he's getting grief from them as far as. He said, there's a, there's a phone line back there, but they're saying that there isn't, it has to be tied into it. In order for our operators to be notified when. Low level, high level, whatever.
Is there not one in the water plant? Is there a phone in the water plant?
No, I think it's at the.
In our office.
Ends up in the other office.
Frontier, so it's hard telling where that line is.
Yeah, I think he's done it a couple of times with them.
Because they say that they don't have one, but yet they're talking on it, so.
Well, if it's, I think they're probably saying since the skated system's in the water plant, they need one there.
But I think that's what he's trying to get, but they're saying that there isn't even, nothing back there in general.
I know when they were.
Frontier saying that?
Yeah, when they were doing the water project, they cut one of the lines and the lines to the garage. Are actually up in front of that red house on the corner of Davis and where you go back to where I live. Where the Sowers live.
What used to be the church?
Yes.
Frontier came all the way up to that road to find the, the line for the garage, so. That's frontier for you.
Yeah. Finding. USG. Maintenance for water tower meeting. Meeting with him in January at some point. Uh, find remaining asset not located on GPS. And find all valves and number.
Number them.
Number them for valve exercising. We bought an, an exerciser, didn't we?
Not bought one, yeah.
I thought we bought one a couple of years ago.
It was supposed to.
Talked about, but never did.
Never did on that side of it. So what we were talking about, um, as far as, so it's every year as far as filters being changed. Back there, and I think it's the mid ones, is that what it? Two filters.
They're on the wells, aren't they?
I think so, inspection as far as.
The last thing that that guy, he changed companies, he was with Or- Orthman, is that how you say that?
Yeah.
And then he went to National Living Water, and now he's back with Orthman.
Yeah.
So National Living Water, he was with them twenty, twenty-two?
Yeah.
And so it's the same guy, he always does sound setting. He did the well testing then, but he didn't do the filters then. And I was thinking that Sean, remember the water discoloration and big. Problem when Sean was here, and I thought it was, his excuse was because he changed the filters and didn't do. Well, that guy on the phone said an operator should never have changed the filters by themselves. So I don't know what he actually did.
Yeah, so but anyway, this quote here, it's in other words, the total cost of the filters is four hundred and fifty dollars a filter, there's two of them. And then total with labor and everything is a thousand fifty.
Can I get a motion to have Orthman go ahead and do these filters?
I'll make the motion to get Orthman to the, to replace the filters.
Second.
Second.
Call a favor.
Aye.
Uh, like I said, there was nothing for the fire department. There's nothing new over there. Uh, visitors forum.
Wait a minute.
Oh.
My department reporter, the two years apart. I usually don't have anything to say, but. I just wanted to let y'all know that what we asked for, for the budget for twenty twenty-four, everything got approv- it got approved. I didn't have to make any cuts. But the MBH, try to explain this. It's through the DGLF, which is the Department of Local Government Finance, the MBH is one account. But the State Board of Accounts required us to split it two years ago. Half of the money goes into restrictive fund, half goes into the regular. The restrictive fund can only be. The restrictive fund can only be used for paving, fixing roads, stuff like that. The regular one is the one that's used for wages, medical insurance, uniforms. Well, it's ne- it has been negative since they, state board of accounts has required us to split it. My corrective action for it is that it will catch up with itself. They accepted that up until this last audit, cause it's not catching up with itself. So I have to reduce the percentage of Kyle's wages that come out of MBH to like down to ten percent. And it was fifty percent. So that means the general's going to have to absorb part of that. So is sewer and so is water. It's the only way, the only, that, it was either that choice or get rid of the employee, that's the two choices. So I have cut my deputy clerk's line to zero. So if I do find a deputy clerk, I have no money to hire them unless I can get additional appropriations. And the other stuff, I've cut my stuff down to exactly what I spent this year is what I have for next year. To make sure there's enough in Kyle's general wages to pay him. The raise that he got for next year. So that's, the general's gonna be tight, so just so you know, if something comes up and it's gonna come out of the general and I say. I don't think we need to do that right now, that's why. But I've cut where I know I can cut to make sure there's enough in his to where I don't have any issues. So that was my, what I needed to add to my part. That's all I have to say.
On the agenda, it says something about ordering.
Oh, I, I deleted it and printed a new one, it's not on the one that, did I, is it on the one that I printed?
No.
Okay, I didn't think it was.
Wow, it's the one that I printed.
Oh, well, I, I, I sorry, I removed it.
Okay, I'm gonna ruffle the feathers even further. Um, on the salary ordinance, and I wasn't here in December, um. That it was agreed. But Kyle was already at nineteen dollars an hour. As of eight eighteen. Well, then the new, the salary ordinance for twenty twenty-four still shows him at nineteen. And I watched the video from the November meeting and. I think probably what I have to do is add it to the next week's, next month's agenda. So I can forward you all that video because in that video, Cecil made a motion to increase. Kyle's wages to twenty dollars then. Not after the first of the year.
And that's why I sent, the email that I sent, the verbiage may have been confusing. But what was being voted on was twenty twenty-four's salary ordinance, not an amended salary ordinance. For twenty twenty-three. So if I missed his verbiage and he meant that it started immediately, then that's on me. But that is not what the vote motion was supposed to be for. That salary ordinance was for twenty twenty-four.
Understood or not, that was the, the motion he made to do twenty dollars an hour as of the fourteenth of November. So. I think we would owe him that back pay, now he's at twenty now, right? So we would owe him for forty-five days.
Well, you figure out where that money's gonna come from and then we can do it, but like I said, that is not what we were voting on. So if I missed the verbiage, then you can do whatever to me if you, if I can get in trouble for that. But an amended salary ordinance is what not, is not what we were voting on, we were voting on twenty twenty-four's salary ordinance.
Which we table till December.
No. I've played the recording three times and listened to it.
Aren't we until December?
No. I said I would make, I said I prepared in November. So that way, if there's any changes that need to be made, I can change them and it be signed in December, ready for January first. That is what I said, it was not motioned or voted on to table it. Cause I, I originally wrote it for nineteen and then I changed it to twenty, the one that's in there on my desk that's signed by everyone.
Well, I've got, I've got November and December sent to me from WCTV.
Yeah, I pulled it up and I looked at it and it was, because she was very clearly explained it to you that you can't. Pay somebody or offer them more money when the budget doesn't have it and that if you want to do that, then you guys can go ahead and vote on it. If you want to, but you're gonna be the ones that have to explain it to the state board of council, you're promising someone money when it's not even there. And that's when Cecil for twenty twenty, as far as getting to, because the money isn't there.
And that's why we don't have an attorney.
No, the reason we don't have an attorney is because you guys had an illegal meeting. You guys are plotting and scheming and you got caught. And then we turned around.
Plotting and scheming, we were discussing options. So.
Sky driver, was it illegal or illegal meeting?
Lori, Lori, Lori. Lori, I have it right here. I've reviewed it, I know exactly what you guys talked about, how you were plotting to terminate an employee. And how to cover up for what an employee had done.
We weren't planning to terminate an employee, but that employee has issues.
You're right, he does, you know, when you have a job to do, you do your job on that side of it, so.
And I will not ever let him call me. The next time he calls me, when he called me, he's gonna get smacked right upside the head. And that's a small portion, I just want you to know that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Okay, we're on TV, y'all.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Visitors. Say, have I got anything?
Oh, general, like.
Yeah, it's visitor.
It began.
So was the meeting legal or not legal?
It was illegal.
I mean, it's pretty simple. I'm no idiot, but I looked up some sunshine laws when I got hit with the keys. Sounds like a legal meeting, nothing's posted. If you voted and said you're gonna fix this people's thing and said, hey, we're gonna fix your thing. And then I don't know what evil plots we got going on here, but I've dealt with you guys quite a bit and it turned out off. Every bit of it, anything that had to do with this town was jacked up from marking lines to not knowing where sewer lines were. The whole nine yards, the whole thing. So I believe there was some kind of plot and some kind of illegal meeting. So that's the first question, was it legal or not? And second question is, what happened to the attorney, why did attorney quit? We really need an attorney right now with everything going on with Cobalt. Not a good time to be losing an attorney. He asked where the money would come from, another deputy, I don't know, how many meters have we fixed? Anybody ever figure out who signed off on the meters that were never put in?
Wasn't not anybody on this board.
Okay, so just say it, say it was an employee that wanted to earn that, then do his job, but still Cobalt should have to be paid for that, right? They said they put it in, they got paid to put it in, why are we paying to redo it? It's ridiculous. I mean. What, what is going on here? Nothing. Absolutely nothing. You're the president, what's going on?
I, well, we're gonna, that's between us board members.
That's between you board members, no, it's not, it's the user problem.
Hey, David.
Sunshine law.
Hey, it was a confidential email, it said it right across the email.
I don't care about an email, I'm talking about a meeting. If you guys sat down and voted. To do this and then you sat down to change it without coming back out here for a vote? I mean, I'm no lawyer, but I'm pretty sure that's an illegal meeting.
And I'd also like to remind that when we had an executive session, when we had the interviews for the three applicants. I was told we were done and I left. But yet everybody else came back in and continued the meeting. So when I came to the regular meeting, I found out we get hired two people at a certain rate that I had no part of. Which is why I did not approve that pay rate or. Fee hiring of both of those employees and it was also admitted from the minutes. One reason why I did not want one of those hired. And that's because he was a relative, but in the minutes it states, the issue I had was an insurance issue.
Because that's what you said, when you said you voted nay, it was against David because of, can I finish? Because of your son that worked at Belden and you felt we were taking one of your son's employees away. You said nothing about Walker not being hired.
I've got it on my phone. I've got it from WCTV, it's on my phone.
Those interviews were confidential, so how does WCTV have an executive session?
No, the executive session is not on here, but when we voted to hire them was done during a regular meeting.
It was.
Right.
And I said I had reservations and you asked me to elaborate. I said, one of them is a relative of a council member, the other one, I have an issue that he may. Have an insurance issue based on his previous job, but only one of those reservations is in the minutes.
Well, I, I will go back and watch the meeting myself and if I need to correct the minutes, I will correct them.
Yeah.
How do you know about this dude's insurance and previous stuff?
From the interviews.
Anyone else?
When is, when are you guys wanting that septic dug and are we gonna look at renting equipment or wait till the back goes done or?
At this point, I would say that we need to wait until the back goes done, when, do they have an ETA on that?
They're waiting to get the approval to do it, but it don't say how long it will take.
Usually don't take them that.
I think a lot of it may depend on how long it takes Dave's Diesel to rebuild the injection pump, the fuel pump on it.
If you say maybe difficult getting parts in quick for it since it's a whore.
Yeah, right. So until, until the back goes fixed, I would say that. You'll have to continue to make sure that the root bolts aren't getting up into it and then once it is, is fixed, then. I'd call eight one one and get it taken care of at that point. You agree?
Yep, yes.
No, I meant to put it in my, I meant to put it in my serial port, but, uh, could we maybe buy some like? Coke or something?
Well, that would just be part of your general purchase as far as on the sewer department.
Right, but I think we'll need a larger amount, cause a lot of the silver maples around trees are around the septics or.
I think.
Is that chemical? Chemicals are in the code book, you don't have to have special approval to buy chemicals that are for the utilities.
Okay, uh, can I get a motion to approve claims and payments?
Motion we approve, payments?
I didn't have a question on as far as on the payments, when I was looking through this, what was the? Now, let me find it again, as far as on the payments, it was on the police department, three thousand dollars.
So that came out of his donations. It had something to do with the K nine. Cause the police department didn't have three thousand dollars, that came out of his donation account.
Right.
That he can do with as he wants.
I, I was just asking what was.
Yeah, that's, it cuts it off, I don't think, I don't know if the word donation, if you can see it, but that's what. Line item it came out of was his donation fund.
Right, no, it, it, it showed that as far as that goes, but I didn't.
Had something to do with the, the K nine.
Yeah, it just says one point, K nine, police donation, three thousand dollars, one third, single purchase.
I have the, it was just a partial payment. Got to ask Carrie more about that. Okay, we got our motion, if you don't have any more questions.
I'll make a motion.
Well, um, David said he wasn't done.
I came down here to ask about pet ordinance originally, until all this business popped off. So do we have a pet ordinance in town as far as like cats?
It's not for cats.
Cats, dogs have to be leased or something, where can I find it, is it like?
I'm pretty sure Carrie has like copies in his office because that's an ordinance that he's been asked about.
Cause we've been having issues with cats.
Yeah, we don't. We don't have an, an ordinance for feral cats, we used to have an agreement with Maine County, but the pet. Hospitals and pounds and everything are so full now that they won't come and take, get the feral cats and fix them and bring them back, they just. Won't do nothing about it.
Uh, did you take that landscape fabric off of that ditch down there on?
Yes, they did, it was on there.
Is that one of them that they were looking at on raising up, cause that one's needs to go up. I mean, you said that one need to go up ten inches, that one down there needs to go up.
When is the finish up on the water project?
Why is that twenty, I don't know. Davis in twenty-seven?
You mean stormwater?
Yeah.
I talked to Scott about that and. He said they've done, they've done it twice now and then it will change once.
Twenty-seven gets repaved. So, I mean, I don't know, do you wanna reach out to him and see what he says, tells you, but that's what he was telling me.
Yeah, I'll be more than happy to reach out to him because I mean ultimately.
Right.
They could turn around, they can say, hey, we're not doing it.
Right, cause that one spot right there.
Twenty-seven, I mean, it's out onto it.
Right.
And as far as when our pedestrians are walking on the sidewalk, they're walking into water and it should not have been designed that way, I guess.
It's, I don't know that it's a design, it's more of a.
Has to do with an elevation.
Yeah, it's like the paving, pavements higher or something there, I don't know.
Design and elevation as far as getting it right on that side.
Which the, the septic on Davis, Doug did ask if. To talk with you guys about maybe pushing it off till warmer weather, if we do do it ourselves. Just because we'd have to set, not Davis, uh, green, one with the pipe sitting in it.
Oh, the storm, right?
Yeah, so just because we'd have to, if we set it ourselves, we'd be setting the concrete, so he's. I don't know how it would react in cold.
They're, they have additives in them, so you're not gonna, it's not gonna be just regular concrete, you're gonna get it that has. Yep, it's gonna have a, a special additive so it can be taken care of and then dead in winter as far as on that side of it.
Throw some blankets on, it'll be fun. Put some of your cats over there.
So I got a motion, if everybody's done?
Yeah.
I second it.
I just, I just think you guys need to fix this, sounds like you're all bickering and fighting and that ain't gonna get nothing done.
All in favor of approval of claims and payments?
Aye.
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 Can you get a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second?
A second.
On favor?
Aye.